Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals to order for June 17th. This meeting is being recorded, both so our secretary can make minutes of the meeting, and also so the full recording of the meeting can be posted on the Community Access Cable site as required by town meeting. Our recording secretary is not here tonight, so I'm doing a little double duty, but she'll get the recording. But I may ask you to give us your names. Well, we routinely ask you to announce your name and address anyway, but I may ask you, do you have a card?
I do not have one.
Okay, well, when we get to it, I'll ask you to spell your name and everything so we get it correct for the meeting. All right, our first case tonight is case number nine, 601 South Avenue, type of district A2, type of structure existing, owner's name Akron Musa, owner's address 601 South Ave. When did you acquire this property? 2021. His application been filed with town clerk? No. Has any previous appeal been made? Yes. Sections of bylaw which relief is requested? Section 6, 240-6.6, accessory apartment. Reason for asking relief? Does not want a two-family, only wants family members in the home. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on May 30th and June 6th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Kimball, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Curran, Mr. Blaws, and myself, John Goldfrozen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abutters.
Mr. Curran, due to the apparent lack of father or brother, I make a motion to waive the reading.
All right, Mr. Andrews has made the motion. Who made the second?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Curran. All in favor? 5-0. Okay. So you're all here for this case. We ask everybody to raise their right hand to take an oath for what you're gonna say here. Do you solemnly swear the evidence you should given this matter should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. What we do is we ask the applicant to make their presentation, then we have questions from the board. And I have some letters from town boards, and then we'll go out to the public for your comments and questions. I think it'll help if I go over the history of this property, just because it's been before us a few times, so let me explain what happened here. Back in 2012, there was an approval, let's see, in 2012, there was an approval to create an in-law apartment. Then in 2019, the den owner of the property, not Mr. Musa, came in and reapproved a special permit to convert what was then an in-law apartment into a two-law home. That was Mr. Strickland. Then in 2022, Mr. Musa appeared before us, and the previous owner had never carried through on the special permit for the two-family residence, so it had expired. So Mr. Musa asked for a special permit to allow it to be a two-family, and we agreed to that, 5-0. So that's the history of this. And now, back before us, why don't you go back and have it be an in-law apartment, if I understand it right?
Where's the second case, I believe?
Oh, I'm sorry.
7:30.
I'm sorry, I use it?
I'm just a neighbor.
Oh.
So we are?
Is Mr. Musa here?
No.
All right.
Well.
Well, what I'm gonna do is, we want the applicant here before we approve it, but since we have neighbors here, I'm going to proceed with the hearing.
Just kinda make sure the door is still?
Yeah, let's make sure the door is still open.
It's still open, Mike. Yeah, 'cause the fire's coming.
And actually, I have a phone number for the applicant, so I'm also gonna call him too, so.
Definitely been confused.
So you out here, good and early?
Yep, always. I'm always early for everything. I hate being late. Probably be called out by a million people.
All right. I will tell the board from conversations with the building inspector on this that Mr. Musa, I guess he's not using the second unit, and he's being taxed as a two-family, so he wants to go back to an in-law. If he were here tonight, I'd tell him, you know, there's a reason why they're taxing you as a two-family, it's because it's worth more as a two-family, and when you go to sell it, it's not gonna be worth as much if it's an in-law.
Don't they call even in-laws two-families? They do mine, I know that.
Yeah, really? Well, and in any case, I mean, it's not our concern if he wants it to go back to an in-law, I don't have an issue with that. But let's, let me just, I'm gonna read the letters from town boards, call on the abutters so they have a chance to speak, and then we can decide what we wanna do about it. From the Fire Rescue and Emergency Services, at this time, Fire Rescue Department has no objections or concerns to the submitted proposal, provided all applicable fire and building codes and mets. Sincerely, Timothy Clancy, Fire Chief. From the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition of Akron Musa for a special permit from section 240 6.6, as the owner wishes to allow an accessory apartment for the property located at 601 South Ave. Town of Whitman Water Sewer Master File indicates this home is connected to municipal sewer and water. Sincerely, Dan Kelly, Health Agent. And from the Planning Board, at the May 14th, 2024 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 601 South Ave. The Planning Board recommends approval of the requested variances, provided the owners meet all zoning requirements to qualify for an in-law such as one service utilities, by a vote of 5 to 0, Adam Somerville, Chairman. So let me call on the neighbors, if you would give us your name and address.
Jason Murphy, 617 South Ave.
Okay, so you're right next door. Okay. And so my understanding, again, I'm probably gonna, probably wanna continue this hearing, because I don't think the board's-
I'm just here for observational purposes.
Yeah. I can tell you that my expectation is the proposal is not to make any exterior changes. We kinda went over that when we approved it for a two-family a couple of years ago, what the driveway would look like, what the door would look like, and so if he's going back to a single-family, it's, an in-law apartment, meaning it has to be a relative of theirs, can't be somebody from outside, and if they don't have a relative to stay there, they can't use it in any way. Also, if it gets sold, the new owner has, if the new owner wants to keep using it as an in-law, they have to come back to us. If they wanted to use it as a two-family, they'd have to have a hearing, and you'd get notified of that.
An accessory apartment, is that what you're gonna?
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna make it an accessory apartment?
It's already, I think, it's that section's on the side of the house, next to Brigham Street, it has like a little separate door on it, that's based on what we presented with a couple of years ago. So I think it's already set up in there, and this is just a legal change as to what he can use it for.
Yeah, that's my question, basically, so it's going from A to B. It's currently what?
It's currently approved as a two-family house, so he can rent that to anybody. He wants to go back to it only being allowed to be used for a relative.
Okay, which is an in-law apartment?
In-law, that's what we call, we call it either, in-law or accessory apartment, yeah. It's an accessory apartment, but in this town, we limit accessory apartments to use by relatives of the owner.
Thank you.
All right. But you don't have an issue with it, otherwise? Okay. All right, what do, we have two meetings coming up, on July 1st and July 29th, we only have-
I have no issue with us deciding on this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, other than-
It's a restriction compared to what we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the only thing is, is how do we, how can we be sure that it's gonna turn into an accessory apartment? Leaving that to the building?
That's, that's my only concern, is that, you know, what, if they've made it into two separate utilities, it has to get changed back to single utilities, does he understand that? I think I'd rather continue it, 'cause maybe when he listens to us, he says, hmm, maybe I better leave things the way they are.
I said, I was thinking, I would leave it alone. I don't know that his taxes will go down.
Yeah, yeah, I don't either. So I'd like to continue it.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, we only have one case scheduled on July 1st, so we can continue it. Let me see what that, July?
There's another date in jail.
Yeah, we have July 29th, we got two cases out for that one, so we might as well do it on July 1st. Just wanna see how complicated that-
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Continue.
All of you are gonna be here July 1st? Okay.
Got them all?
Yeah, I think we can make it 7:30. So I'll accept a motion to continue this hearing to July 1st at 7:30.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaws, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor? 5-0 in favor. So you can come back July 1st at 7:30, but I think really our question for you here is, what makes sense to you financially? I don't think there's gonna be any change to the-
Do you know if they're renting the other unit?
I don't.
Yeah, so, either way, it doesn't matter, they have permission number two, now they just wanna go over family.
Probably less of an impact on everybody, so.
Thanks.
All right, thank you for coming.
All right. Good. We have minutes for proof, if you can do that now?
Yeah, so let's take care of the minutes, 'cause we can't hold the second hearing until 7:30. Okay, thank you so much for coming. Okay, I have the minutes for case number seven, 7 Marble Street, that was the change to the sub-hour. So let's see, Dick Blaws, Wayne, myself, and Bob Curran were here for that one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor? All right, 4-0 on that one. That's for the record, myself, Mr. Blaws, Mr. Andrews, and Mr. Curran. Case number eight, which was 92 Old Mansion Lane, same four people sat on that one. It was the addition. Motion by Mr. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blaws, all in favor? 4-0, Mr. Curran, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blaws, and myself. And then the general minutes for May 13th. I gotta solve. Let's see, all five of us were here for that one, so we can all vote on that one.
Motion to approve. Second.
Sorry, who made the motion? Mr. Andrews?
He made the motion.
Wayne made it, and Mr. Kimball, seconded, all in favor? 5-0 on that one. Okay. All right, let me get the next case ready.
Sean, are you allowed to turn?
I quit if we take a recess.
And make a motion to recess?
Okay, we're gonna recess until 7:30. Okay, we are back in session at 7:30. We'll call the next case to order, this is case number 10. Location of property, 19 Vaughan Avenue. Type of district, residence A2. Type of structure, single-family wood frame. Owner's name, Jeffrey Baker. Owner's address, 19 Vaughan Ave. When did you acquire this property? April 29th, 2014. His application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is requested? Chapter 240, section 6.4, to allow an addition to an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling relative to side setback distance, rear yard setback distance, lot frontage and lot area. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on May 30th and June 6th. Sitting on this case will be Mr. Curran, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blaws, and myself, John Goldfrozen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abutters, unless I hear a motion to waive the reading.
Mr. Kimball, the same thing, I make a motion, have we waived the list of abutters due to the lack of interest?
Okay, Mr. Andrews has made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball, all in favor? 5-0. Okay, I think I already swore in the applicant and his representative previously. So why don't you just introduce yourself and explain what it is you wanna do?
So you wanna do the show?
Yes, sure.
Azu, are you here for this one?
Yes, sir.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, then, then we're gonna have to take the oath, Azu, 'cause you weren't here earlier.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear the evidence you given this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Amen.
Okay.
Are you back again?
Yeah.
You're back again?
I'm trying.
You haven't done it in so long.
I prefer to yell at key than at home.
I know that, yeah.
I don't get to speak my mind.
Amen to that.
Well, I thought you retired.
I am.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of this board, thank you for endorsing us.
Can you introduce, Azu, my recording secretary's not here tonight, so can you just state your name and?
I'm gonna state my name, but she probably don't figure out what the house is. My name is Azu Etoniro, the surveyor for the project.
Okay.
So what we have is a single-family addition of the proposal. Basically, the property has, at least, actually, I have my table of essential requirements. The addition, the residence A2 district, the minimum lawn area required is 18,000, it only has 6,500. The minimum frontage required is 120, it has 65. For setbacks required, front setback is 30, it has 25.9. The side setbacks are 15 feet, 15 feet required, it has 4.6 on the existing house, on one side, and 24.5 on the other side. And the rear yard required is 40, existing is 45.3, we're proposing 25.7. This lot existed prior to the option of zoning in the town of Whitman. And as you can see, the perimeter side residences that are there, and I've kinda shown where the residences are that are located, so you can see how close they are to the law lines. We investigated the possibility of locating the addition on this side, we have some issue with setbacks. So there's nothing that we can do, we need to reshape of the land, which is basically unique in that the applicant does not own any contiguous lands that may be combined into, to cure the deficiency of square footage or frontage. It is meeting the required setback on the sides, the front is, is what it is, the existing house. So owing to the ownership of the land, primarily, and the topography, and actually, we scratched the ground to see what the soils looked like, but thankfully, we don't have to contend with surface system on-site, which would be a real problem. So we don't, we don't have to deal with sewer disposal on-site. We have town sewer, we have town water, we have gas. So because of the shape of the land, and the topography of the land, and the soils, we believe that the proposed addition merits consideration by the board, because of those reasons, and that there's nothing that can be done to cure the deficiency. Also, one of the things, looking at the overall, one of the things that the board has to find that is that the proposed addition is not derogatory to the intent of the bylaw, allowing some mineral addition to create more room for an existing family. And if you go out on these days, it's very expensive for getting a new house, or to buy a new home. So this right here will take care of that issue. So if you're overweening on this side, but prefer buffer, and as I tested earlier, Mr. Chairman and the board, the neighbors don't have any issue with what's being proposed here. As a matter of fact, they're instead of being derogatory to the neighborhood, they're naturally enhanced value of the neighborhood, because the better old you have, the value of your neighborhood goes up. And the applicant obviously wants to live there, and make his home a little more livable. And so with those reasons, we ask that the board find that granting of the variance will not ever be derogated from the intent of the bylaw.
Okay. Couple of questions, so, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Jeff Baker.
You're Jeff Baker. So do you own this now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, but I see the plan says prepare for Michael St. Germain.
So we call it up.
Okay.
They just get credit.
Might get the credit for everything.
All right. For the blame, could you just tell us, explain the existing house, is it one-family, two-family? What's the square footage? How many rooms are in it? And what is going to be in the addition? Either Mr. Germain or Mr. Baker?
So right now, it's 625 square feet, roughly. It's very small. It has one kid now, there's, the bathroom's small, the bedrooms are micro bedrooms.
How many bedrooms?
There's two very small bedrooms, they're ridiculous.
How many rooms total?
Say again.
How many rooms total?
Right now, there's four.
Four.
Yeah, well, the kitchen and the living room is actually opened up in the middle, it's one area, then we have the bathroom and two bathrooms flanking off the side.
Two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms, sorry.
Yeah.
Do they have the full cell?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Second floor?
No. It's a rumblestone foundation, it's all, it's old. He's basically trying to make the house bigger, so that he can expand his family and have a little bit more room to move around in the house. It's very small.
Okay, so what will be in the addition?
It'll be a bedroom, a living area, we're gonna expand the kitchen back, make it a living area, common area, gonna have a bedroom with a closet off the back, that's it.
So just adding a third bedroom?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And the, what doors are going to be off the addition? Any doors in the addition, like to the outside, or?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be one door going towards the driveway side.
Okay.
Off of the back, yeah.
I see, okay.
That's the kitchen, there'll be a doorway with a little four-by-four platform.
Okay.
Which type of?
Will there be a cellar for the addition?
No, it's gonna be done on footings.
Okay. All right. Okay. For, let's see, before I, anything else you all wanna add? Okay. And pretty obvious, the existing house is single-family, I mean, I'm sorry, single-story?
Yes.
And the addition will be single-story?
Correct.
And it'll remain as a single-family?
Correct.
Okay. So before I read the letters from town boards, and then have questions from the board, so in terms of the zoning relief, it needs, as Azu stated, it needs a finding, a determination that the addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in the existing structure, because this is non-conforming lot, interior, frontage, and setbacks for the existing house. The addition adds a new non-conformity for the rear setback, so I think it needs a variance for the rear setback, and that's actually the only zoning release the addition needs, because it conforms to the side setbacks. So we're looking at a variance and a determination.
So we're not, we don't need to give a variance to on-site or front?
No, because it's non-conforming. But the fact that it's non-conforming means it does need a determination.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is there, because the addition is so large compared to the existing house, is there any variance in that?
No, not for residential, not under the state law. Are you, which case are you here for?
146 Franklin Street.
Okay, we'll get to you then. Okay. So with that being said, let me read the-
It's taking over very early, son.
That's, no, no apologies needed. I'll read letters into the record from the Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. At this time, Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services has no objections to this proposal, provided all applicable fire and building codes and mets. Sincerely, Timothy Clancy, Fire Chief. For the Planning Board, at the May 28th, 2024 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 19 Vaughan Avenue. The Planning Board recommends approval of the requested waivers by a 4-0 vote, Adam Somerville, Chairman. And from the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition of Jeffrey Baker for a variance from section 246-4 relative to side and rear setbacks, frontage, and lot area to allow in addition to the existing single-family dwelling on the property located at 19 Vaughan Avenue. The town of Whitman's water sewer master file indicates this home is connected to municipal sewer and water. Sincerely, Dan Kelly, Health Agent. So questions from the board? Mr. Curran?
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Andrews?
I didn't hear what you said about the solid demand of full cell.
No, the addition's gonna be put on footings, it's gonna, you know.
And you are, you are going to have an exit from the back, on the side?
Yes, right on the driveway side.
And no second floor?
No, no.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Kimball?
I have no issues. Thing is, the rear lot, the house, is on the other street, so you're not getting any close to the house than it is. So you're not getting any closer to the house than it is. And I'd like to see a small house, a standard small house. It's gonna be in a pitch. Oh, God.
Mr. Blaz?
Um just can you just check the um the uh the list to make sure that the uh the two neighbors, Alan Butler and Catherine?
Okay, okay. So first of all, the neighbor behind Sandra McCarthy is on the place.
He has a letter from his boss.
Oh, please, yeah, if you have anything to submit, please give it. And Butler and McCann. Thank you.
Yes.
Um McCann's listed and uh the Butler's listed. So we do have handwritten note. We, my brother Ralph Edwin Butler Jr. and myself, Alan Butler, have no objections to the application Jeffrey Baker for the property variance from section two forty-six point four. Respectfully, Alan Butler and uh and Ralph Butler.
Just a question, right now the house is like a hip roof?
Yes.
How are you, how are you gonna tie that together?
Uh the 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 addition is kind of at the same roof line coming straight across the addition. It's a full-size hip roof now. And I'm gonna make it a full-size hip roof again. It's just gonna be extended through the middle.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's not even gonna look like an addition?
Nope, it's gonna look as seamless and clean as it does right now. It just, if you take the house and you stretch it, it's gonna look exactly the same.
Same size, yeah.
Correct. We're actually putting new siding, auto siding and putting windows in it.
On the entire drawing.
Yeah, so the whole exterior is gonna be all the same over. Yeah, yeah, more makeovers.
It needs it.
Yeah.
All right, that's no other questions.
Okay, um just just sort of for the record, uh is it, had you considered adding a second story? Which then would not have needed a variance for this?
We did. It cost efficiency, couldn't cut the funds to put the second level on, but we did get the funds to put the addition off the back.
Would it have even been technically feasible, given the age of the house, to put a second story on this?
Will the foundation have to be evaluated?
Right.
Structural engineer?
So it's it's possible and okay. And I I think someone else.
Well, we didn't get, we didn't get past the numbers. Once we put the numbers together, we realized the other way.
Yeah, yeah. Um and frankly, that's less impactful on the neighbors. Once you put a second story, now you're looking over.
Right.
What is uh between your house and McCarthy property at the rear of the property? Is there a fence there?
There is.
Is that, is that on?
It's just a white vinyl fence. Or is it? Yeah.
Is that on the McCarthy's property or on yours?
That's on her, she built it.
Okay.
She built it.
Yeah, I feel I should I should know what was supposed. I should know the plan.
Yeah, it looks, that's what it looks like. Okay, all right. And it looks like you have some trees there as well. And just I think someone else noted that the McCarthy house, which faces onto Washington Street, is not directly behind your house. So to the extent that uh the rear setback's being reduced there, um it's only affecting their back in terms of any impact would be on their backyard and on the house itself. And as you noted, there's a fence. Uh I don't uh have any any issues with this. Nice, nice upgrade and you know, you could have torn it down and put up a two-story. You're not doing that and uh you know, you could have done it on the same footprint and doubled the size of the house.
Put a two-family in there.
Could put a two-family.
It's been in my family for a while, so I want to keep it. I just want to make it more livable for my son.
How many, how many children do you have?
I got one son as of now. I don't know.
Okay.
Holds it in store.
All right, um okay, I, uh, anything else, anyone? Okay, so as I said, it needs a variance for the rear setback and of the to the addition. And then it needs a determination that the addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure is.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Curran, is there a second? Uh Mr. Andrews? Oh, the only other suggest, I just wanted to make a condition that it remain a single-family house.
No problem.
Yeah, um if that's acceptable, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Five oh, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question. I want to start seeing more of you.
I have one question.
Yeah.
There is a letter that has to be written up and given to the building inspector?
Yeah, you have to. So cease and severance to, because see, first we write up the decision about a week or so. It's submitted to the town clerk. You then have to wait twenty days for potential appeals. John, who that won't be under the law, that's what you have to do.
Right.
So uh I'm gonna make a note to make sure our secretary tells you when the decision is submitted to the town clerk. In twenty days, you go to the town clerk and as you would know, the procedure is tough. And get a copy of the decision. She certifies that there hasn't been any appeal. You have to file it at the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
And take proof of that to the building inspector before you commit a building permit.
Okay, all right.
And you can talk to the building inspector. There may be stuff he lets you do ahead of time.
Right, right, okay, right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ford.
Thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion, wait until eight o'clock.
All right, uh the board will be in recess until eight o'clock. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back into session. This uh this hearing is being recorded, as everyone knows, both so our recording secretary can be here tonight can uh make minutes from it. And also we make a recording and post it on the Whitman Hansen uh community cable cable TV's website as required by town meeting. So this is case number eleven. Location of property, one forty-six Franklin Street. Type of district, residence A two. Type of structure, existing dwelling with proposed second lot. Owner's name, Karen Marshall, trustee. Owner's address, one forty-six Franklin Street. When did you acquire this property? December ninth, nineteen ninety-nine. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes, has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested? Section two forty dash six point five, a lot two frontage variance. Reason for asking relief? Applicant wishes to subdivide existing one point four acre lot into two lots. Lot one being a conforming lot with one hundred and sixty-three point forty-four feet of frontage and containing twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-four square feet. Lot two containing thirty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine square feet in excess of two times the required area with forty feet of frontage allowing access to a dwelling setback from the street. A frontage variance of eighty feet is being requested. This proposal is consistent with other lots on Franklin Street. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on May thirtieth and June sixth. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Curran, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blaz and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of the butters. Mr. Blaz?
Chairman. The following is Anna Butter's list using the requirements of the state zoning act. Parties in interest for property located at one forty-six Franklin Street, Whitman Mass. Kristen Ahola, Meiserman, Family Nominee Trust. Stacy DuBois, one hundred Franklin Street C one Realty Trust. Carlos Augustos Dos Santos. Twenty thirteen Jackson Revocable Trust. Lindsay O'Brien, Heidi Lauder, Family Revocable Trust. Alexandra Pazzella and John Mulready. Sarah Russo, Judith Luzon, Jennifer DeYoung, Ludi and Pierre Luis, Carolyn Anglin, Michael Bertoni Senior, Herb Corliss Junior and Kath- Catherine A. Corliss, Joshua McLune and Michelle Gilbert. Albana A. Vanyanova, James and Cynthia Taylor, Eric and Sarah Marchalatus, Jolene Jordan, R and M Realty Trust, Dana Lamb Junior and Shad Lee, Deborah Collins, Matthew and Charlene Kroll, the Don Whitman, David William O'Neil and Jack for Jean Jones, Mark Devlin, Margaret P. McEwen Revocable Trust, Jen Corp Incorporated, Jessica Marie Rodriguez and Luis Enrique Rodriguez, thirty-six Henry Hollow Realty Trust.
Okay, the procedure we follow is we ask the applicant to make a presentation. I'll then read some letters into the record from town boards uh commenting on the proposal. We'll have questions and comments from members of the zoning board. And then we'll go out to the public for your questions and comments. So since me, any of you might participate in this and we're conducting a hearing, we ask that everybody raise their right hand and take an oath. The USONLY Square, the Yevenshucho, given this matter should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, uh who's making the presentation for the applicant? Mr. Garvey?
Uh Carl Garvey representing Karen P. Marshall, trustee of the property at uh property at one forty-six Franklin Street. Uh the property is outlined on the eastly side of Franklin Street, just north of of George Street and contains sixty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-three square feet or one point four-one acres. Uh the property has been in the Marshall family ownership for fifty-one years and the family has decided to sell its property. The proposal is to sell the property uh into two lots. Lot one that contains the existing house and driveway. That lot uh would contain twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-four square feet with one hundred and sixty-three point four-four feet of frontage, which would be a uh conforming lot in the town of Whitman in the A two zone that requires eighteen thousand square feet and a hundred and twenty foot of frontage. Uh lot two uh would be created as a pork chop estate lot that would contain um thirty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine square feet, just under an acre, uh and um would have forty foot of frontage used as access to a dwelling set to the rear of the property. This lot would be double the size of the eighteen thousand square foot lots that would typically be in this uh A two zone. The only variance that is being requested is a lot, forty foot frontage. For the most part, it's houses eighty feet away from the abutting George Street property in excess of fifty feet from house on Franklin Street. Anywhere from forty to a hundred and four feet, hundred and fourteen feet from the Devlin property and another hundred feet or so from the condo village association property. So it's uh a lot that exceeds, as the board remembers years ago, that they did pass in the state pork chop lot amendment in this town. And for the most part, I think we beat that criteria. That was slated tonight, by the chairman.
Is this going to be for a single-family house?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else you want to add?
No, I mean, there is a sewer, sewer easement and drainage easement on the property. This that one will be tied into the town sewer easement uh in this particular area. Water will be tied into Franklin Street. There is a drainage easement that collects runoff that runs towards, runs in a northerly direction away from the property. Uh the property slopes probably from the highest point from fourteen George Street in a in a northerly direction.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm sorry, and where did you say the sewer would come connected to? Would that be on Franklin Street as well?
Uh there's a sewer even that runs actually.
Oh, I see it.
The the town took a sewer easement through the Marshall piece
Okay.
to run sewer uh from Winter, from Winter Street through this property out to Franklin Street.
Okay, all right. All right, let me read letters into the record from town boards. From Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. At this time, Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services has no objections to this proposal provided all applicable fire and building codes are met to include sufficient fire emergency apparatus, access, egress and water supply. Sincerely Timothy Clancy, Fire Chief. From the uh planning board. At the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the board reviewed the plan for one forty-six Franklin Street. The planning board recommends approval of the requested variances by a five-zero vote. Adam Somerville, Chairman. And from the Board of Health. The Whitman Board of Health gives conditional approval for the petition of Karen P. Marshall, trustee for a variance from section two forty dash six point five relative to frontage as the applicant wishes to subdivide the existing lot into two lots. Uh town of Whitman water sewer master file indicates the current home is connected to town water and sewer. To receive final approval, the owner must connect any new dwellings to municipal water and sewer as well. Sincerely Daniel Kelly, uh Health Agent. All right, uh questions from members of the board? Mr. Curran?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um how much of this lot is, and I need to be clear?
It's ninety percent open.
How is it?
It's mainly, it's mostly mowed right now.
Is it, is this a field out there or?
Yeah, a little grass, yeah.
Um can we talk about the driveway and how wide that's gonna be?
We're showing a typical driveway, twelve feet wide.
Twelve feet wide? I think typically um the fire department wants to be able to have sixteen feet that's clear. So from the center of that driveway, eight feet either way. Doesn't have to be paved.
Yeah, yeah, in the past, I think we've put like a cup, a gravel strip down along the edge. Not not to pave it sixteen feet wide, but.
Right, just so they have clear sixteen.
But it's.
Sixteen feet wide is uncommon. Agree with that.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, um what's the size of the house, the proposed house?
It's gonna be a colon, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go, go.
See, you can develop, I'm gonna be one that's gonna purchase in the property with a pool and building on it. But we're planning on building a colonial with attached garage, uh which would be somewhere in the twenty-two to twenty-four hundred square foot range.
It's gonna be two stories?
Correct.
Full cell? That's all I have, Mr. Kimball.
Uh Mr. Chairman, uh is there any wetlands involved in this lot?
Uh there is a drainage easement uh that collects overflow. But it's, it was a drainage easement that was requested by the town of Whitman that also runs up along the abutting property. Uh it slopes this way. Uh if you look at the DEP uh wetland change map, there is a portion that is showing a wetland area in here. So any work within a hundred feet of that area will require the filing of a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission.
Do, but is it dark green wetlands?
No, it's actually woods.
That's woods?
Yeah, the rest of it is just open grass. It's dead, smote.
So you may or may not need to go to the Conservation Commission depending on exactly where the house is located, is it?
It may be in the buffer zone, but it would not be within fifty feet of a wetland, so.
Right, but it'd be with.
They would file a request for determination if the Conservation Commission deems that it is wetlands.
Right, but just clarify, it it may be within a hundred feet of wetlands, but it really require you to talk to the Conservation Commission. But it it might not be too, depending on where the.
I mean, the Conservation Commission would be signing off on the building permit. They should go out and look at this project. If they think it's within a hundred feet, they would request the filing. Uh we would probably file it in the N-Rat.
Okay, request, request the determination. Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Now that's no further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Uh Mr. Blaz?
Just a couple of questions. Mr. Murray, the, what is the rear setback on this proposed dwelling from the, I guess it'd be the Devlin property? It looks like it exceeds the 40 foot, but I can't really tell.
I had, well, I mentioned this before, it's like 40, it's roughly 42 feet here and 114.
42, so, okay, so that's within the building level.
Yeah. This is 82 feet here, so this is around 85 feet from there. This is 53 feet from the rear of the existing lot, like I said, 114, 40.
Yeah, the only one that's concerned was that one dimension. Can you explain, okay, that it's a rather odd shape, this proposed lot two? What the thought process is as far as how you determined what would be lot one, what would be lot two around that eastern area?
Basically, so the sewer could be tied into this existing sewer easement in here.
Based on the sewer.
And we are, I mean, also trying to keep this lot, the original estate by law for the town said whatever zone it was in, which would be the A2, that it should be double the size of that, which would be roughly 36,000 square feet. So this actually could have contained with lot one. But it's really to tie into the existing utilities.
But then that would have required lot one to give an easement to lot two for the sewerage or for the utilities?
Yeah.
That makes sense. Just a point of notice that the driveways on both the Kroll property and lot one are on the opposite sides of the-
Yeah, they have grass.
Yeah, yeah, the driveways on the opposite side of the houses and the proposed driveway. So it doesn't really interfere with either of the abutting properties.
Yeah, it's roughly 80, I would say 80 feet to the Kroll property and obviously not 100 to the existing garage.
That's all I have.
Okay. I want to, I want to hear what the neighbors have to say about it, but that's my own observation. I think the, we, in the case of estate lots or pork chop lots that we've approved, we wanted the the new building to be at least 50 feet from all property lines. So you might need to adjust the location of the dwelling just to, you know, a few feet to the north as we look at it from Franklin Street a bit to the left, which would also perhaps, if you sort of tuck it behind the existing house at 146 Franklin, that also makes it less visible from the street. So unless there's some reason not to do that, I think shifting it might be 20 feet to the left as shown on the plan would probably be an improvement. And would take it further away from both the Devlin property and the Kroll property.
Yeah, we only kept it up there only because if there are wetlands there, we didn't want to impact the general.
Okay. It could be, you know, maybe subject to that, that issue. And, you know, my, the driveway width, I think the way to handle it so we don't make it wider than it has to be is to, say, in consultation with the fire chief. If 12 feet with two feet of gravel on each side is all that the fire chief needs, then I don't want to see it paved for 16 feet. The fire chief may also have some question about turnaround or, you know, pee, whatever, at the end of the driveway near the house for their equipment. So I think we should just kind of leave it subject to the fire chief review by the fire chief, which he kind of alluded to in his letter. And, you know, my other, I think issue would just be the proximity to the Krolls. Did you consider moving that, the, well, let's see. If you took a bit more or moved it, again, I'm saying to the left, as you look at the plan, leave more of a space to the Krolls. Well, the driveway anyway could be moved a little bit.
I thought you were talking about the house, John, because the house is, house is like 50 feet.
Yeah, but I think the house itself, I think, I think was just, again, subject to where the wetlands are. It could be here, you know, a little bit to the left, that's better. But I was also just looking at driveway because I I want to hear if the Krolls, I hear from them, but they, I think, the most directly impacted by this. And granted, their house is close to their property lines, if it is what it is. But I'd want to see the driveway.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be centered.
It doesn't have to be centered, it could be off a bit more to the, towards the existing house.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, what do we, what 12, let's say.
Because you, you're 20- Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could be another-
28 feet.
It could be another 10 feet over and you'd still be-
Yeah, yeah.
And we can discuss with them too, what, did you anticipate any fencing along the driveway, how to separate the, Mr. Egan, I guess I'll direct this to Mr. Egan, any, how to separate the driveway from the Krolls house in some fashion?
I don't know, are they here?
Are the Krolls here? No.
There's somewhat of a wall and some, it's pretty vegetated actually on their side. Pretty well vegetated all the way back here. I remember to find this bound in the back, we had to dig through the bushes to actually find it.
Okay.
The sellers are telling me that that property to the regular Krolls is actually a rented property.
Yeah, okay. All right, with that, I will say just to the butters and all that. As Mr. Gavi alluded, there was a zoning amendment approved in Whitman to allow this kind of a lot with a small frontage going backwards as long as the the new lot was twice the size of what a regular lot would be and also that the dwelling would be 50 feet away from all property lines, which is more than would normally be the case. The amendment was disapproved by the attorney general for some technical reason, not because of the substance of it. So never actually went into effect, but we have had proposals like this in the past that we have approved in the, sort of the idea being that's consistent with what the intent of town meeting was. Subject to looking at what the impact on, on the butters and the neighbors, neighbors is. So with that being said, let me open it up to members of the public. If you'd raise your hand, give us your name and address and ask your questions and tell us your concerns. Anybody wish to, yes, sir?
David O'Neil, 14 George Street. I think you've mentioned it, but how far away would the house be from our property line?
About 80 feet.
80 feet.
Want to take a look at this?
Yeah.
This is the house. It looks like we're going to move the house over here.
Yeah.
So it's not going to, how can it affect?
Okay, all right. And, you know, maybe you can answer this, maybe even, I don't know, but, you know, we have due to the water table, you know, where we are, our seller does take on water sometimes. Would a new house alter that? Or is there any way that we could know? Would it, you know, affect that not in our favor? That's one thing that kind of popped into my mind.
So, I guess first, would it be possible to have roof drains from the house directed into the ground?
Yeah, well, the contours for this property now slopes towards that low area where the drainage easement is. Roof drains could be shedded in that direction. If we have filing a notice of intent, we may do some type of an infiltration system with small infiltrators, but it's not going to work. That house is-
Yeah, at least in terms of Mr. O'Neil's house, it actually slopes away from your property, so it shouldn't. Single family houses are not required to take, you know, particular drainage, you know, build drainage systems, but I'm just suggesting there might be-
Yeah, I mean, even-
Roof drains.
Filing a notice of intent with DEP on a single family home does not, single family homes are exempt from that part of the Wilderness Protection Act. It's only four or five lots, in excess of four or five lots, but-
I guess we could at least say to it, make a condition that ensure that it be sloped so the drainage would flow towards the drainage easement.
Correct.
Wouldn't that be a good condition?
Final rating should be in that direction, correct.
Okay.
Can I have a-
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Floss.
This is going to have a basement, correct? So based on the water table and building codes today, you're going to have to actually raise the dwelling higher than what buildings were built in the past. So will you have to backfill around the foundation, the poured foundation? So in other words, will you actually build a mound to set the house on?
Well, probably some areas coming in to make the grade all work appropriately that will be building up more of the front yard. Then around the back, typically we would not, we would drop the wall down and have more either a partial walkout basement or a full walkout basement. But we would be putting it above the water table. Every house that we do, we do some sort of drainage with the butters anyway as a standard, whatever required or not. To me, that's the biggest factor why people get water in their basements is usually with the roof water dump next to the house. So we always put it into some sort of system to get away from the building. We also do a basement drainage precaution, which I don't have to also be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Is everybody, I guess I'll ask, is everybody, you all came, so we want to know if anybody has an issue, if you're satisfied with it? Yes, ma'am. Can I have your name and-
Yeah, we're Sam Montgomery, 15 Hickory Hollow. We are not butters.
We're neighbors.
Okay.
We had questions about the wetlands and all the the animal, the wildlife that lives down there in the woods. Like I noticed that they, are they planning on taking out those trees?
I don't think that would affect, nothing along the border where the wetland area is. There's the condo project there, that area in between is where the drainage area is created. And that area plus all of Hickory Hollow, there's no trees on that side that we would be cutting down. And really, I don't, I'm not sure there's anything in the middle of the lot that has to be done. I think it's pretty wide open, so I think-
You will treat it with the problem?
Yeah, the wetlands and trees.
Yeah, that will all stay the way it is.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, you're good. All right. So I think-
And he'll wish you to a condition that we don't have a single family.
Why don't we? And we could put a condition that this is to be a single family, not a two family.
Yes.
I think other conditions that the structure be at least 50 feet from all property lines, which it may already be. And if possible, based on wetland, potential wetland issues, but if possible, it could be shifted a bit to the, to the north. Because yes, the Kroll property may be a rental property now, but then somebody else, somebody else buys it and wants a single family and now this is driveway next to them. So I still want to account for the proximity. So I think if it was, if it's possible to shift it so that it's actually shielded from the street, you know, if it's, if the driveway is sort of running alongside.
I may be, I may try to do some shifting in that, I mean, this is over the 18,000, so I may do some shifting of this property line just to ensure that I can get the 50 feet.
Okay.
So that you don't put in you that the lot has to be 21,724.
But you'll still maintain the, the performance two?
Yeah.
And the 40, the 40 feet would be where it's shown on this plan. I think that's the important thing that-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, no, the only thing I would-
Might adjust the boundary between, rear boundary of lot one.
Here, to keep this, I might go this way a little bit, which would, I might want to keep it. Move this line, something like that. I mean, I mean, just a small.
Yeah, just because you got to maintain the 40 feet setback from 146.
40 in the A2.
Yeah, so that might, that might affect you. Okay. Yeah, it just looks like the house could go slightly backwards, back to the rear a bit. Again, depending on whether there's any wetlands or whatever. Looks like some adjustment could be made. And I think that's, it's probably it.
I think so.
Okay. Anything further from members of the board?
I'm just wondering, is there a, is there a fire hydrant? Is there a fire hydrant anywhere near there?
Yes, you can find my house on 146 Franklin Street.
At 146.
That's a bit-
I mean, that's your, oh, it's a stub or something.
Probably, um-
All right, I did see a stub or I did see it on the, on the plan.
Now, when I drove by, it looks like-
That's good enough.
There was one of the, it looks like there's a large tree. Is that going to, on your property, existing property? That's going to have, that's essentially where the, that's too bad. But that's your- I mean, frankly, it somewhat reduces the value of lot one, in my view, that this is going to be divided this way, but I can understand the overall, overall financially, it works out, works out out of this way. And otherwise, it does meet the requirements of what would have been the estate law by law. All right, if there's nothing further, I will close the hearing. So what's requested is a variance for lot frontage for the proposed lot two to allow it to be 40 feet, otherwise both lots would conform. And the conditions I suggested is that the proposed dwelling be a single family dwelling, that it be at least 50 feet from all property lines. That the proposed structure, if possible, be shifted a bit to the north to be further shielded from Franklin Street, depending on the location of wetlands. And that the width of the driveway and dimensions and shape of the driveway be subject to the approval of the fire chief. Can I, you have a motion?
I'll make that.
Motion by Mr. Floss to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Kimbo, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you all for coming, very helpful. Okay, so we have-
Real quick question. This house here is 18 George Street, that's the Devlin property?
Uh, yeah.
And on this, it says that it is 34, which is my number.
No, this is Franklin Street.
I'm sorry, I'm going on the wrong way. This one here says 34 George. And that is not the correct address for that, is who would I?
I'm going to ask you to just talk to Mr. Gavi since he did the survey. He might have the answer directly over the sound.
Okay. All right, thank you.
He has a question about which lots, please. So members of the board, we just have a little quiet pause. Could you move outside, we got to finish our business. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. So we have a meeting on July 1st with one case and a meeting on July 29th, those two cases.
The July 1st was continued for first one?
Oh, that's right, we only continue to the first one, thank you. So we'll have two. We already had one case and now we'll have two on July 1st.
Are any of those July cases, the Franklin Street proposed, a little subdivision down there?
No. I sent out an email a couple of days ago. July 1st is a house on Perry Ave. There's two existing older houses and what they want to do with it. And July 29th, there's a Washington Street, again subdivision into two lots proposed. And a building on South Ave, an old building that they want to take down and put in mixed use development there.
How far now?
199 South- 199 South, which is like across from Court Street, Shaw Street. Okay, with that, this is taken care of, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kimball, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Curran, all in favor? 5-0, we're adjourned.